Okay, it's six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. As a first order of business, are there any changes or additions to the agenda by anyone? If not, I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 5th meeting.
Move we approve the minutes from the August 5th meeting?
A second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Pose? So moved. So we're gonna get back into the conditional use hearing for Mr. Hall. He's not present, but you've all gotten the emails showing the colors and what this looks like, and that, as I recall, was the only thing that we weren't clear on at the last meeting. Does that sound correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there any discussion relative to how this looks and how it will fit in to the Coolidge historic overlay area?
Is that approved for that historic area?
Is what approved?
This kind of a structure.
Well, you know, it doesn't go in so much saying what is approved as to what isn't approved.
True.
And I don't see anything in here that says this is not allowed.
Yeah, we don't really specify a whole lot what like buildings look like or...
No. You know, they're looking for the height of the buildings, compatibility of existing materials. I look at this while looking at adjacent properties and what's already in the area. Also, if you're on the Coolidge property, say you're at the general store, post office area, looking towards this house, you can't see it.
Can't see it.
Can't see it at all. So as far as what kind of impact it's going to have, I would say none personally.
And no one from the Coolidge Foundation raised any issues?
Nobody has. Nobody has. Nobody's responded in any way whatsoever to this, and they've seen it. They've been notified. So I can only take that to mean that they don't care.
Well, in a lot of ways, it's a temporary structure too.
Well, we were just talking about that, Anne. This thing isn't on a permanent foundation. It's not bolted down. It's held in place by...
Anchors.
Anchors, which means they're into the ground, and then this somehow attached to the anchors, whether it's tied or bolted, I don't know.
If we did though, issue a permit, like they could build a garage in the same footprint without a permit, looking ahead, as long as, you know, the dimensions were the same. It's just, and I don't see that as a problem, I just put that out there.
Okay.
So basically, we're approving the structure of that size in that location.
We are. That would be. And as far as the location, it's within all the setbacks. As far as the, once again, the Coolidge-Homestead historic overlay, it's not, in reading through all this, I don't see where it's causing any kind of an issue. And nobody has spoke up from the Coolidge Foundation against it, so I can only feel that they're okay with it. No other neighbors have come forward with any issues regarding this. So I would say, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion to pass this, now would be the time, unless there's more discussion if necessary.
Do that now or after the hearing is closed?
Oh, after the hearing is closed, of course, yes. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So we could make a motion to end the discussion.
Sounds good.
At least the public hearing, right?
Yeah, the public hearing.
So I'll move that, unless Frank's already done that.
Okay. And there's a second to that?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? So moving right along. Brian Kovlik from Two Rivers wants to discuss municipal planning grant. So Brian, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
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 So you're up.
Awesome. Yeah, so back a couple of months ago, Kyle went to my office, did a planning consultation with you, and noted that your town plan is, will require an update, I think in 2027. So one of the things mentioned was your interest in applying for municipal planning grant to help pay for our time assisting you with updating the town plan. So I first wanted to meet with you now and talk about municipal planning grant that would require, because the next round of municipal grants are open soon, they have until November 3rd, I believe, to apply for it. So now sort of is the time to verify you have the interest in this and move forward with the application.
So our task tonight is to decide whether we're interested and then move on with you. Uh-oh, okay.
Can you, can you give us some good reasons why we should go forward with you?
Yeah, so municipal planning grant would allow you the opportunity to work with one of our members of staff, help the staff number, guide the town plan rewrite. Town plan rewrites contain, or should say updates. They can take years going through it, chapter by chapter, editing for clarity, editing for new data, census data, or other data sources. You also, as you're going through it, you know, think about policies you want to add, if it's going to be good policies. So having someone from the RPC able to go through with you and advise you on policies that other towns have adopted, that maybe make things a little bit more clear, or help you better align with Vermont's planning goals. So I think it just makes the process more smooth for a planning commission to work with a member of the RPC on their town plan update.
Okay, thank you. So we're at a step now where we decide whether we want to go forward or not. Can you give us an idea of the costs involved?
The costs? So for municipal planning grants, we would assume it would be between $12,000 or $15,000 we'd ask for as terms of the grant itself. There is a 10% match requirement from the state for municipal planning grants, so the town would have to provide 10% of the total project cost as match.
And do you have an idea of what this total is going to be?
No, I don't yet know. The maximum you can ask for a municipal planning grant is $25,000. So in that case, 10% match would be $2,500 to a town. But I don't think it would be that much. I think it'd be more in the range of $12,000 or $15,000, although I would want to talk with my executive director more about it and see what his opinion is.
But I've been through this before, and it's labor intensive from what I've seen. So I mean, I would make a motion to pursue the grant.
Sir, a second?
I didn't hear your motion.
I'd make a motion to pursue the grant.
Second.
In favor?
Yeah, or unless Frank already...
I just have a question.
Uh-huh.
Do you see any issue with the select board approving that?
I don't think so. And do we have a little bit of money for planning or no? But I think so. Like, none of us want to volunteer to do that work. It's tedious, right? It's a lot of reading.
Right, and we have professionals doing it, yes. Though I agree, I just had that question.
Unless a volunteer comes forward.
Yeah.
Are you volunteering? No, I'm just making sure there's money.
I would say it's extremely worth it.
Oh, I agree.
As also an RPC commissioner, having watched other towns go through this and what we do to approve what they do and what the staff does to help us get through their whole thing, it's almost priceless.
Right, yeah. Okay.
I will say, I mean, if you are interested in this, I also will need to get the permission of the select boards, I'll have to go to the select board and also verify that they are okay with it, with the equivalent application.
So moving...
So I'll move we ask the select board to go ahead and pursue this.
Yeah.
Does that have to be something that is, is there any warning or anything, any legal steps that have to be taken here?
For now, I mean, the decision is just to pursue the application. So I have started an application. It's kind of lengthy, so I've copied, you know, some town information into there from another older application, similar like two years ago for a town plan update, that I'd want to talk to you about, the things you would want to highlight as sections you would particularly want to revise, or things you would want to focus on in the town plan update. Because I do have questions about that, and of course, for now, it's just decisions of the planning commission in terms of how the application would look like. Because there unfortunately isn't a guarantee that the planning commission will receive a municipal planning grant if you apply for one. There's going to be other towns applying across the state, and there's only going to be a certain number awarded. I think it's likely you'll get one, but there's no for certain guarantee. So we do want to make sure that the application itself is as competitive as it can and scores as high as it can against other applications from other towns. So I would want to, you know, have a conversation about things you would want to highlight in the town plan, and some other specific questions related to that, so we can have a discussion afterwards too.
And if I understand correctly, there's some things that have changed with Act 250 where we need to be compliant. Is that...
There is. So we, as an RBC, now under the steps for changes, really Act 250, we have to create village areas in our regional plan. We have a future land use map in our regional plan. And what we create as village areas in our plan will have to be the same village areas you have in your municipal plan. So that's one of the statutory changes that have happened over the last six years since the town plan was adopted that will have to be updated in the town plan.
Well, we voted to go ahead with this, so what's the next step?
So the next step would be getting an idea based on your knowledge of the town plan, things that you would want to call out with the application and focus on, which certainly need to be in the county use, because the village areas have changed inside of the municipal plan to match what's in the regional plan. Right now, we're working with towns to identify the areas that we're mapping in the regional plan. So that will have to be something we do automatically, it just because statute says you have to update this. I thought it'd make sense to focus on the housing chapter a lot. Particularly, it would look good in the application itself to have a section that was discussing the housing needs for the town. So it's going to add some content about housing needs, adding more content to the town plan and talking about that. But I wanted to make sure that that was something you guys wanted to focus on.
I mean, from my perspective, you know, we've done a few of these town plans over the years. I don't think there's a, like a ton of developable real estate, developable real estate in our, you know, downtown areas, number one, right? And affordable housing doesn't really seem to be like a conversation in our area.
Well, being close to Killington and Bloodwell...
Yeah, we're stuck in the middle.
It is in our region a big issue. So if Plymouth were able to come up with some possibilities for affordable housing within the town, it would be worth looking.
Well, as I recall, the plan shows an expanded village area and then a few other areas. Within the expanded village area, where they suggested the majority of the housing would be, it's either flood plain or on the side of a mountain. I mean, I don't know how that happens. We can say, oh yes, we want to have housing in the village area, but is that physically possible?
Yeah, there are site constraints, and town plans, of course, are advisory documents by nature, unless they're, unless they're being reviewed as part of that 250 case or for energy facilities or telecommunications facilities undergoing the Section 248 process, they're advisory documents. So you can say that in your town plan that you want to have more housing. And of course, that doesn't make it happen, but...
That's the point.
We will need to have some sort of policy that carries wording that indicates at least openness.
A desire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of these things are kind of important to figure out how you say them.
Well, we're not opposed to it. We don't necessarily see how it's possible, but that's not to say some, somebody a lot smarter developer person couldn't come in and propose a way of doing more housing. So, you know, we're open to it.
Okay. Yeah, I can say adding a housing needs section to the housing chapter would be something in the application. Also, I don't think your last plan had what's called an affirmative determination of energy compliance, that is, you had an enhanced energy plan as part of your plan. From what I've looked at, it would be the requirements of that. Is that something you'd want to do going for this town plan update, being able to attain what's called an enhanced energy plan? That just means your energy chapter has a lot more discussion about like citing policies for renewable energy resources and other things in addition to what like the minimum that's required.
Oh, I thought like you had, like under a certificate of public good, you know, it was pretty stringent nowadays for solar. I mean, there's no wind here, obviously, right?
Wind's unlikely.
Yeah.
Not impossible, but just unlikely. It's mostly solar, yeah. So normally what happens in that 248 process, your town plan is given what's called due consideration. So the Public Utility Commission will look at your policies and relating to energy citing, and they can decide if they want to apply those or not at their own discretion. But if you have an enhanced energy plan, which needs to go on above and beyond the requirements that is statute, and you have all the other additional requirements, the Public Utility Commission will have to look at your town plan's policies relating to citing renewable energy facilities, and in writing, will have to determine if a greater public good is served by applying those policies to this project or not. So they will have to apply them if they do believe a greater public good is served by applying them. So there's a higher sort of standard, and your plan will carry more weight of those proceedings if you do have the enhanced energy element of your town plan.
So we should probably explore that.
Yeah, flatter.
Right.
It's optional for towns to have it if you don't, if it's not required. Roughly half of our towns in our 30 town vision have it.
Well, the next group to okay this is going to be the select board. So we have pretty much voted in favor of it ourselves going forward. And I asked what the next step is, and I believe that's the select board okaying this.
Yeah.
Do you make that presentation to the select board, or do you count on us to doing that?
It's either, I can do it or someone in the planning commission wants to.
Do you want to?
I'll ask Angela to put her on the agenda.
Okay. Do that.
Is there a specific wording that needs to be used in putting it to the select board?
Just that you're asking for their support for applying for a municipal planning grant.
Okay.
And they're acknowledging that a match will be required and that they have the money available for that match.
What happened to the budget?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
The zoning budget, yeah.
Otherwise, somebody's gonna have to raise their hand and take on the project.
Yeah, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's not so much interest in enhanced energy plan as part of this update.
Well, I think we should discuss it further.
Okay.
But I don't think we can decide whether yes or no right now until we have some more information about how it would make sense here.
And at the very least, earlier, they had sent out some updated energy data targets to the planning commission, so that will need to be used in the town plan update, so updating those energy figures and targets, regardless of whether you have fakeness energy or not, that section will need to be updated for that purpose.
Brian, you mentioned 248 process. What is that? Is that part of the Act 250 changes?
No, no, it's separate. So Section 248 is a part of statute, Vermont's land use and building statutes, that govern how cell towers and how energy generation facilities are reviewed and regulated. It's done by a public utility commission that's appointed by the governor. So they review projects, apply policies, so do Act 250, but it's separate.
Does anybody have any questions or anything more to add?
And saying that the select board says it's okay for us to go ahead and apply for the grant, what is the next step after that happens?
Next step is to write the application and figure out the budget for the project as well. We've used, I can use other municipal planning grant applications of the guide. I've done that to get started on an application, but need also figure out the items that go into the actual timeline and work plan that's required. So working on that and then forwarding a copy to you guys for review would be the next step.
And if this happens, who will we be working with? Who among you will be with us?
I don't know, it'll be one of our members of staff. It could be me. It's possible, but it'll be somebody else just depending on the workload. So it could be me or it could be another one of our planners.
And they will be physically present when we do this? Okay.
Yep, yeah, the word will have to be, you know, will have to be reviewed and decided upon in planning commission meetings. So things might happen that are being, that are just not reviewed, so we can look through it, mark up edits we're proposing, changes we're proposing, new texts being added, or things like that, but that will have to be decided in the planning commission meeting.
I guess we're, I guess we're done then at this point.
Yeah, I just don't know. So do you want me to go to the, to the select board, or do you want to, so that I didn't catch it, that was decided?
Well, I think it would make sense for you to make a presentation to them, such as you've done for us, where you can explain to the select board both the need for this and how you justify or how you figure the costs involved. And it shouldn't be complicated at all.
Yeah, yeah, I can try and join the next one. And I'll plan to come back to the next municipal planning commission meeting next month, and have a copy of the application for review.
Brian, do you have an email address that you can share with me here, or is that...
Yep, I can send you an email. What is your email?
Oh, that's a good question, this one. J, just the letter J, K U L L M A N at plymouthvt.org.
I'll send you a link here, I'll just, to get my contact info.
Doesn't want his broadcast over there.
No.
It's probably probably available.
All right, I'm, we're just kidding.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
There it is.
I will see about joining the next municipal meeting.
Excellent.
It's on the 8th, but we'll get you connected.
So I may not be free on the 8th, but I should hope next week.
Okay.
The 22nd?
Yep. I think that'll probably, well, I'll copy on this. You'll be on the email chain, so you'll know what's happening.
Thanks, I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, has anybody given any thought to the vacant and derelict buildings issue that we were talking about? Does anybody have any new thoughts on that? So let me ask, is this worth pursuing? We're not going to be able to make a decision on this ourselves. We can only make recommendations to the select board. This is something that we feel we should pursue as far as coming up with some sort of recommendation as to how to deal with derelict and vacant buildings, or is it not worth the time involved? I'm looking for anybody's ideas on this. Anne, you look like you have any ideas.
I confess that I didn't get deep in the weeds with this Bloodwell thing.
That's okay. That in itself says...
But the weeds looked a little bit more than we need, so it might, I suspect, be useful as a way for the town to communicate with people who have properties that could be considered a public nuisance. Vacant may not always lead to public nuisance, but public nuisance, if it's dangerous, it would be worth our thinking about it.
What comes to mind are some buildings that may have been vacant for years and are in serious disrepair as far as you can see from the road, you know, without doing a real inspection, but maybe talking about that and the... maybe talking about that and the potential is maybe as a fire hazard, maybe as just a just a hazard in general. How do you deal with that? Is this something that we want to explore and get into and then be able to make recommendations?
I would think so. I mean, there are a lot of places where people have taken advantage of vacant spaces that are easily accessible and things have happened like fires that could spread, especially I think now, I think we're not even wanting to light a match anyways.
I mean, we all know of a couple of vacant and vacant buildings that are in extreme disrepair. And it doesn't seem like there's anything that is being done about that or maybe can be done about it until we come up with a plan and a recommendation that can become some form of ordinance perhaps, which is out of our venue, but we can definitely look into it and make recommendations. So.
That's what I, I'm in favor of it. And I think you have two classifications, simple isosceles and you have dangers. But whichever, and I think we have an interest in isosceles too, just from a standpoint of everyone's property value, the reputation of our town. And then you have the dangers, the dangerous buildings. But the thing that I've come across is the enforcement of any of this is difficult, if not impossible. I think I described the last time, a fire damaged building. And even the state fire marshal couldn't condemn it. And I just don't see that there's that enforcement ability. If you find that somebody has a dangerous situation, what's the next step?
Well, you have to have an ordinance. There has to be an actual ordinance in place before you can take any kind of action. As it stands, there isn't one. So how do you justify action? You can't just call somebody and say, you know, your building's unsightly. We want you to do something about it.
No, I agree getting to that point, but then I ask, I mean, I just, I can't even enforce the short-term rental thing that we have in our ordinance. And, and I get, and when I try, I just get, it's like, it's like a brick wall. There's no, even the town health officer, it's almost like, does this job have any, any teeth behind it? Who has teeth? We don't have a policeman in this town.
I think you do. I think it's, but it's not, it's slow.
It's gotta be financial. Yeah. So, because that's the only shot.
That's to be a serious thing where I'd go before, somebody, not me, but somebody would go before the board, the select board. And then that would be, I guess you then get your town attorney involved in it. But could you make it so you have power of eminent domain over this property?
Well, I do think like what you're doing within your ordinance, like you can find somebody a certain amount of day and it may not, they may not respond for a while, but like that's a lien on the property until it's paid.
Okay. If you could do that, that's your ultimate weapon.
Yeah. It's gonna be financial. That's the only possibility.
No, I'm all in favor of it. I just, I get a little cynical about how far the enforcement of anything goes from here.
Sure. But, but the key thing is that most people will follow an ordinance.
Right.
What you're worried about are the ones who won't.
Those are the outliers.
But if you don't have an ordinance, you don't have anything to get all the big massive.
I'm not opposed to an ordinance. I'm just going, what's the? And I, maybe I'm the wrong guy. I'm in the middle of all this. And to me, it seems like there are more scaffers than there are people who cooperate. Because every day I'm dealing with people who can't even renew their license without, you know, dragging them through the mud. And then there are the people who don't even want to, and this is short-term rental and it even goes to town health officer. People do stuff. And, and you know, you find out about it after it's already done.
Don't you have any kind of enforcement written down somewhere? You know, penalties or fines or something?
Yes, we have, the short-term rental has a hundred dollar day fine. And we've used that. The town health officer has administrative orders that you could proceed. I haven't seen anything that was that serious that would go to that point.
But you do have the power there.
Well, one's a state law and the other is a town ordinance. Right.
All right. So.
I think maybe I'm just venting, but I agree that it's not a straight, it's not a straight, from what I can see, once you pass the ordinance, which I'm 100% for, it's just, you know, we're just a planning board. There's gotta be somebody with teeth.
It starts with an ordinance. And, and the challenge here is writing an ordinance. It's getting one that makes sense to everybody. And we have one model, you know, from Ludlow. I don't know if it's the ultimate model, but, you know, they, they were able to do it. If they could do it, we can do it.
Well, that hundred dollar day fine is a nice leverage.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, if they don't pay it, there's a lien on the property and who wants to buy a piece of property with a lien on it?
Well, there's that.
The bank won't finance it.
It's going to have to be paid at some point. So, so people know that. And unless they're planning on holding on to the particular property forever, it doesn't matter. But beyond that, it does.
Why does a person, what motivates a person to let their property turn to crap?
Negligence. They run out of money. They, they don't care.
It's overwhelming to deal with.
So if they run out of money, they're not gonna be able to pay any?
No, but eventually the property will be sold.
And they'll stop paying taxes if there's a lien on it and the town will acquire it, goes to tax sale. Lien's discharged.
I'm the devil's advocate here.
Yeah, good questions.
But it's a process and making sure that that lien is always recorded with the courts and that there has to be a process involved so that it's updated on a regular basis.
Right. Yes. So it sounds like there is interest in pursuing this. I wonder if there's somebody on this board who might like to take the lead on. As far as, as far as initially coming up with ideas more than anything else, to present at our next meeting or the following meeting, to just throw out some good ideas, well-thought ideas. We can all come up with some, but then it, it seems to go nowhere. But if we have one person willing to take this on, I think we'd move forward faster. That's just my thought.
What is the process of a town adopting an ordinance?
I honestly don't know what the thorough process is. I think that if we were to come up with some ideas and present it to the select board, I think that's got to be the first step because we're not going to be able to tell. The select board would probably be the ones to have that power.
If it could fall under a zoning ordinance, that's one thing, right? It could become part of the zoning ordinance. Or it could be a standalone.
You need to start in the town plan though, I think, in order for it to be in the zoning ordinance.
Wouldn't it need to be a town vote? Like at either town meeting or?
If it was a standalone ordinance, I don't know if it goes to the zoning ordinance as part of the zoning ordinance. So that would be a distinction. It's a question. Like where, where does it live? You know?
Who knows?
And statutorily, I don't know where it should live. Like, that's probably a good question for Brian.
Because the zoning ordinance was just approved by the select board as opposed to other ordinances. The STR was through a town vote. So if you stick it into the planning ordinance, it'd be easier to get through.
Well, you know, it would, the worst thing about it is it would endure, like people would know, would see it frequently where a lot of times you're not really aware of other ordinances.
Right, yeah.
And Brian, did you happen to catch that?
Yeah, I was just saying, it was an interesting discussion. So ordinances, I mean, you can have ordinances as long as they are at least somewhat enabled by statute. So you can't, you know, give yourself at least power that doesn't exist in statute. And I'm, it's come up before in other towns about abandoned properties. If you definitely recommend having an admission of abandoned property in your zoning bylaws and following up the procedures that happen when a property is deemed abandoned. So I don't know what your bylaws currently have.
I don't think we have a definition of it.
Well, that tells us enough. I think a good first step would be getting.
We don't have it in the definition.
It's not.
Getting conversant with this ordinance that Ludlow has. They've done a lot of work to get this passed and put forward. So that's a decent model in a local, local area that we could look at and, and maybe adopt some or all of that.
Brian, theirs is a 10-page vacant, dangerous building ordinance adopted in 2020. It's quite detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing familiar with theirs. Doesn't that hurt with other ordinance specifically about that, about abandoned properties, but?
Well, it's not abandoned properties. It's vacant and dangerous buildings ordinance. Which is different. The dangerous being the key word, I think. And giving them the clout that's needed.
Right. I mean, the hell about circling a property?
No, you can't. I asked that question. You can't. The fire marshal does that.
Fire marshal? Unless you had it in an ordinance.
Well, if you sign it, it goes.
Yeah, you just, because the Ludlow one assigns enforcement stuff to different people. Well, I could take on doing some basic work with this Ludlow thing. But it won't happen. I'm trying to think of the, I'm, I'm involved at the Episcopal Church of Vermont convention. I run all their resolution stuff and that's just cranking up. And I should be done by the end of October. So.
Gonna fit in before ski season. Gonna fit in before ski season.
Then there's ski season. Well, yeah, that's, but I don't do too much in the early part of the season.
I don't, I don't think it's urgent, but it's, it's one of those things that we want to have a plan going forward. How are we going to address this? And the thought of everybody on the board coming up with a plan individually sounds a little ominous.
Well, I'd be happy to sort of do it and do a job on it. Do you have a digital version of this thing? How did we get this?
I got that from Angela and she got it through a backdoor process, I believe. So I think we can, she can.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't want.
You want an email to you?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
Angela can, I have to get, I don't have a copy. I have one.
Do you want a copy?
Did you hand it out last time?
I can't. I don't have a key to the office, but I can get copies for everybody. I thought, no.
Didn't you hand it out last time?
It's in the packet for the town plan. I'm pretty sure I sent everybody what you haven't done.
That's, okay. I know where that, I know where that pile is.
You have it. I'm pretty sure you have it. But let me know if you don't.
Packet this came in.
This is yours, Anne?
Yep. It might come in August collection of stuff.
We have a plan then for a plan. Planning ahead.
That's what I was like from the planning board.
So I think at this point, we could close the meeting if somebody would like.
Well, do we need to vote on?
We are, but we're gonna close the public.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll close the public meeting so that we can deliberate.
I'll make a motion to deliberate.
Okay.